All right, real quick, like to call the meeting to order and take a roll call. Mrs. Kitson.
Here.
This is Daniels.
President.
Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
And we now need a motion to appoint Mrs. Kitson as the president pro temp.
I make a motion that Mrs. Kitson be president pro temp this evening.
So moved. I mean, a second.
Mrs. King, Mrs. King, I should say, Mrs. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So now moving on to agenda item one, like to thank everyone for joining us this evening to the work session. And I'd like to recommend adoption of the agenda as presented. And a second.
Second.
So it's moved by Ms. Daniels and seconded by Ms. King. A roll call, please.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes.
Yeah, I see in the head nod. Thank you. Ms. King.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson.
Yes. Okay. So we have a number of agenda items this evening. We're going to be going over an athletic update. Setting our time for organizational and budget hearing meeting in January. Discussing our board norms and goals. Just follow up to our October work session. A strategic plan update and a review of the tentative agenda, which will be presented at next Monday's monthly board meeting. So if we could start, I guess I'll just turn it over to Mr. Hanky now if he has an athletic update or if you'd like to take over. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mrs. Kitson. We, the COVID-19 Task Force met last Thursday. And I invited Mr. Krasnoak, our coordinator of athletics and activities to the meeting to get some background information about what our league is doing with athletics. We, I recommended and put in place a moratorium on sports based off the Board of Health's recommendation. Until January 4th, of course, since then, things have changed with the league and I just wanted Mr. Krasnoak to update where the Lake Erie League is with sports and things like that. Dale?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. After the COVID Task Force meeting, I spoke with Ms. Thomas, Mr. Hanky, but they both agreed it might be better just to update the board on a regular basis since things are changing almost week to week. Currently, there's almost three tiers of our Lake Erie League. One tier would be no practices, no games, which is where Bedford and Garfield Heights are. We have three schools that are practicing only, Lorraine, Shaker Heights, and Cleveland Heights. Cleveland Heights first day back of practicing was today. So we have those three schools that are practicing only. And then we have three schools that are back full blown with athletics. They are practicing and competing in events. And that's Maple Heights, Shaw, and Warrensville Heights. And then out of those three schools, Maple Heights is allowing fans, Warrensville Heights is allowing fans, and then Shaw is not allowing fans at any of their events. In terms of future events for the rest of the league, that is one of the things that we're talking about possibly is eliminating the presence of fans at all future LEL events. If that's going to be something that's going to get our athletes back on the court or on the mat sooner. If that's what it takes, that's something that our league is willing to do as a whole to kind of be unified with the one exception of Maple Heights. Just because they don't have a streaming platform, all the other seven schools in the Lake Erie League have a streaming platform and could stream all of their games live, whether it's a wrestling match, girls' basketball game, boys' basketball game. It wouldn't matter. We'd be able to, we have the capabilities now to stream all events live. So there'd be no parents, grandparents, cousins, anybody that we, anybody in the neighborhood, everyone would be able to watch all the events live. So currently with the LEL, that's kind of where everybody stands in those three different tiers. Any questions? Any of you have?
I guess I know, I know. Thank you, Dale. You talked about that athletics and as far as the other events, such as band and other student activity events and that.
They are paused as well. Everything's paused. There's no, there's no extracurricular. I know a lot of times I speak in terms of athletics first and I shouldn't do that, but every extracurricular activity, band, show choir, music express, everything is paused right now.
And Mr. Hanky, is that the plan still through January 4th or 5th?
Well, that's what I, I wanted to get at least some feedback from the board. I'm a little concerned again, much like the fall, where our kids are not having an opportunity to participate in practices where other schools are. I, I would, I would argue, and I'd like to talk to Mr. Krasnoak a little bit more on this. I think pausing any competition until January 4th is going to be vitally important to make sure that everyone is safe. The second piece, I believe that I think the Lake Erie League does need to take the lead on is having no fans at these events. If that's going to get our athletes safely back on the court. I think there, you know, we have demonstrated through the fall, there were indoor activities where we were able to do them safely. And in the start of the winter practicing season. With remote learning, this is one way that the students are able to participate in something. We did, we did in fact have games going on at the middle school because they started a little earlier and we didn't have any issues. My, my, you know, with, with all of the recommendations and with the COVID Task Force, I mean, I don't know, I think there was consensus, Ms. Thomas, but you can, you can speak to this too. But I believe I am of the mind that we should probably, we should start practicing before the 4th to give our student athletes the opportunity to do that.
Can I ask what changed as far as the county? Are our numbers better? Are we able to test our athletes? Is there criteria, objective criteria that made you change your thought process?
Well, quite frankly, the criteria that made, it wasn't health criteria. It was the fact that our student athletes are, are, will be falling behind in terms of the rest of the school's participation. Secondly, the more I thought about and talked to the COVID Task Force, I think we can do this safely considering what we were doing in the fall. And into winter practices. I continue to want to work with Mr. Krasnoak on how competitions will look after, after, after January 4th, if in fact, you know, we can restart those safely.
I know one of the things that changed league-wide, that week of Thanksgiving, when we first shut down, the entire Lake Erie League shut down as well. So all eight schools were shut down, no practicing, no events. And then schools have slowly opened back up and with, with a little bit stricter guidelines. So that way they can start practicing and eventually move into competition where we now have three schools that are ready to start competitions because they've been practicing now for, this is their second week. With it, with, with more strict guidelines in terms of reporting and limiting the amount of people in the gym for practices. So there's not even multiple teams in there at one, at one specific time period. So a team would come in, they'd clean, or a team would come in, practice leave, they would clean everything, and then the next team would come in. So there's no cross contamination or anything like that that could occur.
Is there any way we can test our athletes? Or no, we don't have that capability?
No, we do not have that capability and there have been a couple of pilots in the state, but that has not happened anywhere, in any, any large measure around the state.
I think that, I just want to say from the committee, I think that even since the fall season, what we've kind of tried to do is just make sure that our student athletes are safe and to kind of stay aligned with the league. So just to my fellow board members, as we see things changing, I think that we are just working to be aligned. And like Chris and Dale said, there are some, some things going on with the LEL right now. And so their leadership is a little twisted right now. So just waiting to get a leader to, to help guide the entire league as one. So it's not so much of, you know, a three-tier system, but we're all kind of doing the same thing. And then also, there was one other thing. Oh, Christmas break. So do our sports teams typically practice during Christmas break?
Yeah, normally they're practicing every day except for probably Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And then depending if, you know, I know some teams even on Sundays, I know Coach Johnson with the boys' basketball team, they prefer to practice on Sundays and have Saturdays off just because of the, the way the boys' games are Tuesday and Friday. And then the girls play Wednesdays and Saturdays. So it's, you know, the basketball season's semi-structured. It could be a little bit screwier on the holidays with, depending on when the dates in the, in the, in the holidays fall. But there's usually somebody in there, you know, every day of the week.
Sunday practices, is there, do we have some from our custodial staff available for cleaning in there? How would that work?
We have, during the, during the break, our housekeepers are in every day. Yeah, that's part of their schedule to do a, usually it's a deep cleaning. Because students are in, but since they've been cleaning anyways, that they're scheduled to be in during the day. So they would be down there after every practice, cleaning the gyms and the wrestling room as needed. So, yeah, they will be there during this timeframe.
Coach K, would they also have the, have to go through and have their temperatures checked and, and do all of those things and the parents sign off on the waivers similar to what we did in the fall?
Yeah, we would set it up the exact same way with the pre-assessment that the students would have to come, basically have to be pre-assessed before they got there, their temperature taken, once, once they enter the building. And then the same mask and all those, you know, safety protocols will still be in place.
Approximately how many students would be practicing in the gym at one time?
That's something that I wanted to work with, you know, Mr. Hanky and some of the coaches. I really want to limit that so that way it's one team at a time. I think that'll help if there is an outbreak. So let's say our JV boys' basketball is practicing with our varsity. If there is one of those kids is contaminated, then both teams have to shut down. But I think if we could limit our practice times to one team, so it'd be, you know, roughly 10 to 15 at a practice. And that way, if there ever is an issue, it's, it's, it's isolated with one team and then we're not shutting down an entire program.
And would that be one team in the big gym or would you do one team?
I'd rather have one team in the entire gym. So that way, there's no issues. If a ball goes over there, if a kid gets there early, if, if a team wants to, you know, spread out more, you know, to use different baskets to allow extra space, that they want to go to the weight room. We've got 10 to 15 kids in our athletic complex at the entire time and that would be it.
If a student is symptomatic, I know there was discussion about possibly having a policy in place that they are tested on their own or cleared by a physician, that they're allowed to come back. Do we have anything like that in place? If we're sending a student home or a student has symptoms, we aren't testing. So we don't know if that patient or if that student has COVID. But before letting them back, is there any kind of policy that says they have to be signed off? Like if a patient had pink eye or a student had pink eye or that, or some contagious disease, we want to make sure that they were, you know, signed off by the physician before they came back to school.
Well, we do follow CDC guidelines and Dale, you can talk about symptomatic students you've dealt with in the past where there's been, you know, a symptom or, or kids have been sent home. CDC, right, I believe right now is, you know, if you have a symptom or symptoms, it's 72 hours before they can come back. It's a little more tricky to mandate, mandate testing for people. We, I believe though, we, Dale, can you talk about the couple of cases you've had?
Yeah, they've been, a couple of cases where we've had evidence of direct positive exposure. Those kids have all chosen to quarantine for their 10 days, but not take a test. They never, they never had any symptoms or anything like that. So after their 10 days of quarantine, they were allowed back on the program. And I believe they just reduced the amount of quarantine to seven with a negative test or 10 total without a test. So that's something that we will still continue to follow. There are kids that, just like any of us, kid might come with a headache, sniffles, something like that, especially with, you know, the season it is. So we have asked them to stay away for 72 hours just to more or less, you know, we spoke, we've had a call home to the parents and spoke with them just to monitor things. And if it was a, a simple just ache, you know, woke up with a headache or, you know, they've got some, from being outside, they have some sniffles and a red nose that has dissipated and cleared up over 72 hours and we've allowed them back.
Thank you. Any other questions? I know this decision is up to Mr. Hanky and I appreciate you giving the board an update. Any other questions or comments from the board members?
Just have we had any positive cases in our sports as of yet?
Not that I'm aware of. There's been, we've had some direct, actually I take that back. There are, there is one athlete that I know of that had it and we've had a few where family members have had it. And then we've had a few where they participate in another group organization, could be a church group where somebody from that church groups had it. And they've had to quarantine as well because they were directly exposed to somebody within that group.
And our staff, our coaches and volunteer coaches, all that, they're following protocols and?
Yes, yeah. You know, the only, the only way we're going to be able to come back safely and I will work with Mr. Krasnoak to make sure the protocols are very tight. I, you know, one, one team at a time, you know. We like to have, you know, our athletes in the gym and we, and, and, and working out and participating, but we have to be very strict on this in order to make sure that people can participate.
Yeah, I just have one more question. In the event that we do have a positive case, do that completely shut the whole program down for 14 days? Or how is, how do we plan to move forward with that as a district? Or do we have a plan that if we actually do find that there was a positive case and possibly expose other students and staff?
I'll let Mr. Patton actually take that too, along with Mr. Krasnoak.
I was going to say that, yes, if, if, I think the contact tracing goes back 48 hours. Is that correct, Mr. Patton? So if they are with our team exposed in a, in a situation where that six-foot barrier and over two minutes is broken, then yes, we would have to shut the entire team down, break and quarantine all of them because they would all be direct firsthand exposures. But if it's something that a kid's not there for four days and then while he's gone, you know, he would test positive or the, or the mom or, or, you know, family member that they live with would test positive, we would go back 48 hours. And if he's around our student athletes, then yes, we would. But if he's not during those 48 hours prior to testing, then we would not have to quarantine or shut somebody down, Mr. Patton.
Yeah, and we've been in contact with the Board of Health. I can, I pretty much talk to them daily or email them. When we have positive cases that we've had, again, in any guidance that if a student did test positive, we would reach out them immediately. They would guide us on there. And again, it's, it's really the direct contact with the student. So what, as Mr. Krasnoak was just saying, stating before, it depends on the exposure rate, where the person was. So there's certain factors that the Department of Health has actually had as guideline through on, and I've been in contact with them and they would guide us through that process.
When we defer to them, you know, in terms of, you know, if we, if, if we, always on the side of caution, but they, they, they're very good at giving us advice. Mr. Patton's kind of, well, kind of de facto taking on the liaison role of that. Thank you, Mr. Patton. But he just, he's gotten to know those folks over there. They've been very helpful to us.
And that would be students, staff, coach, anyone that's positive. Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you for the update, Coach.
And Mrs. Kitson, if you don't mind, I'd like to be able to let, let Mr. Krasnoak leave the meeting if that's okay.
Sure. All right, thank you. So next on our agenda is a setting in time for the organizational and budget hearing meeting. We have to, Mr. Sluka, is it within the first 14 days of January?
15 days of January to have the organizational meeting. Yes.
In the past, we've done it usually the first week right after New Year's, depending on everybody's schedule. This is a meeting that usually takes no more than 15, 20 minutes. So the last couple of years, we've been doing it around the lunch hour, just get it in, get it done as a procedural meeting. But that's not to say that we could set it anytime depending on each person's schedule. We don't have to, we will approve the meeting at our meeting date and time and the tax budget meeting date and time at our regular meeting next Monday. But just to give us some thought on your calendars and what day we want to hold this organizational meeting and tax budget hearing.
So that would be January 11th?
Well, we could have it, we don't, we could have it any day from?
Any day from the 4th through, yeah, through the 15th.
I'm open anytime, any day.
So if I guess if everyone could kind of look and if there's days or times that don't work, send, send an email to?
Yeah, if you would just send me the days that are open that you prefer and then I could coordinate and we could send out and come up with a common date and time.
I mean, do everybody have a calendar now? Can we possibly just set it now?
I have my calendar open. The other, now one thing to keep in mind is at the organizational meeting, we elect our board president, vice president.
Committees.
We have in the committees, right?
Yes.
We've selected people to run for the committees. Now, January 4th is the Monday. January 11th is another Monday.
Um, as far as committees go, I know during our board retreat, we kind of talked about some reconfiguration of our committees. Would that be a time for that conversation before, do we need to have that conversation before we?
I think, I think actually in my, and Mr. Sluka, if I'm wrong, but we could talk about the committees at that meeting.
We could talk about the committees at that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
See if there's any?
You can add a delete committees during that time if you'd like. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I thought possibly that may have been one of the things we were going to be discussing tonight as we discussed our board norms.
Um, well, I have the board norms and I have the goals that we discussed through the October retreat. My only concern is, I think with committees and that, in my opinion, would be if we could wait till January with an, with, if we can have as many board members present as possible.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
But we can start the discussion tonight and then we can, you know, finalize things. That's what I was thinking at the January meeting. So.
I agree.
So do we want to push for that second week?
Well, how about like January 11th at noon? Would that work? Ms. King, would that work for you with work? Noon meeting, it should be a half hour.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I don't have anything on my calendar.
Are we planning to do this virtually?
I think so, yes.
I'm thinking a virtual meeting. Now, we do have the, the House bill that was passed or the, Governor Dewine passed. We can have a virtual meetings through July, I believe it is.
And I think we have something on the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hanky, we have, we will have something on the December agenda to address that.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson worked on a resolution just, you know, for, so we have it on record that the board is able to have virtual meetings until July.
At noon.
Okay.
That will be our organizational meeting and the tax hearing. And I don't know if anyone's been through a tax hearing. It's really nothing much.
The only one I think has not been through is Ms. King. So, yeah. Mrs. Daniels and Ms. Thomas got the, the chance to go through last year.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So next on our agenda, board norms and goals. And I pull our norms and our goals from the strategic, from our meeting with, with Ms. Key Wright's and, or Wright Keys. And I don't know how we want to kind of go through this. If we want to talk about the two goals that were put together for us and see if that's something we want to adopt. And I'm thinking if we do adopt, and again, this is all kind of new. So it's, it's our goals, it's our norms. We can decide who we want to do it. But I'm thinking that we can look this over, finalize the goals and the norms. And then at the January, I apologize, at the January meeting, we can actually put this as an agenda item either at our organizational meeting or at our first meeting in January. So if you want, we can go through the, the two goals that were put together. Then we can go through the board norms or if everyone has the information in front of them and they have any questions. I'm not quite sure how we want to go through this as a, as a team.
With the goals, I guess, we didn't, she started on goal one, just taking it through the SMART procedure and goal two, it wasn't complete. So we go one with student achievement is being one of our goals, focus on how many students have access to educational opportunities. And just making sure that our specifics are measurable, capable, results focused and time-bound. And we need to discuss how we wanted to do that for goal two also. And goal two was equity focused, defining equitable access for all students with the focus on the whole student.
So I think we're, at this point, I think we're in agreement with the two goals, student achievement and the equity focus. We just need to make them SMART goals, which are measured, measurable goals. And my concern, I guess, would be as we don't have our strategic plan in place. So I'm not sure if we need to have our strategic plan in, in place to finalize these goals so that they work together or, or how that's working. That's my only, that's my concern. I'm not quite sure how we're going to, if we can finalize these tonight. Any thoughts?
I mean, technically, technically, we're kind of a little backwards with it because we should have goals first. But I think that we chose goals that are in clear alignment with the strategic plan. And maybe doing the SMART part may, we can maybe wait for that to align that with the strategic plan. Some of the answers maybe will be in our strategic plan, but strategic plan should actually align with our goals. So we should have our goals first and then the strategic plans should assure that it meets the board goals and go from there. And we could probably collaborate on just, you know, how we're going to measure everything with the strategic plan. But I believe and I think once we see Mr. Hanky's strategic plan later and we've been a part of the process, I think we, we did a pretty good job with coming up with goals that aligned because we were a part of that process too. So we, we were very much so a part of that process. So I think they're all going to coincide, but technically our goals. But technically, our goals are the foundation and then the strategic plan will align with that.
Except I, I'm thinking each, each year, we should have board goals in our strategic plans, like a five-year plan. But in my mind, I'm thinking there's board goals every year that we want to measure. And that's where I'm personally having trouble separating the two. I mean, I just, because I think they're, it's, it's all inclusive and that's where I'm struggling.
Do you, do you mind if Mrs. Kitson, if I interject about the equity piece? So this is just something to think about with the board. We, we, I think we, the board would like, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, you know, one of the specific measurable, attainable, time-bound things is you could put as, as, as development of an equity policy. That, 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 that might be something the board might want to think about. And I, I put my board report last Friday. I'm now, now involved in the superintendent's equity committee statewide. And they could have, they, they could help the board with some, I, I mean, I, I can funnel information and, and ideas to the board that's happening on a statewide level. And from, from all the superintendents from, and it's kind of, kind of neat because you have representation from urban districts, rural districts and suburban districts. And so you get kind of different perspectives. So that's, that's just my two cents, but it's, it's just something to think about maybe for the equity piece.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Hanky, most definitely. For the equity piece, do we lose Malat?
I think her, she just turned the camera off.
Okay. Um, I think that's a good idea.
And as far as student achievement, I think, and I like the equity because we can develop an equity policy. It's something measurable by the end of the school year, whatever it might be. But the student achievement right now, we want to focus on, on the student achievement, but it's, but right now, we, we do not have a measurable board goal that is clear and has specifics that we can measure. I, I mean, staying in student achievement, how many students have access to educational opportunities? It seems kind of broad. So we need to have something more measurable.
I think we could do something around NWEA because that right now is the, you know, the only measure that we have, that progress monitoring. And so it could be something around looking at our fall data. And we want our students to achieve a year's worth of growth, a year and a half worth of growth between our fall and our spring testing. So because we don't have the OST and some of the other ways to measure student achievement, that might be the best way to do that right now until we are back physically. And we could look at revising that next year or adding another measure. So on the NWEA, we would like to see, you know, a year's worth, two years' worth of growth. And then we can add in things in terms of OST. Or we could also put something in around the graduation rate and things like that. But I think probably the easiest thing in terms of student achievement would be NWEA.
So, okay, so looking at a year's worth of growth. Now, I know we talk about barriers and I, I'm already listing barriers because I think this is a very challenging year. Looking at a year's worth of growth, I would like to look at how we've been doing in the past. So with our testing, do we, are we able to, is that realistic? And I'm not sure, I, I just, that's where I think we have to have some baseline data.
Yeah, and I don't know, and I guess, Mr. Hanky, you could speak to this. From my understanding, last year was the first year. And I know that even from my personal experience, the first year is kind of a wash. And then we didn't have the spring testing. So it's going to be hard to look at that baseline data. But typically, it's usually a higher than a year's worth of growth that you really want to see from your, your scholars. But with some of the barriers that we have, I think that would definitely be a for a district, a doable goal. Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, I, I think what might be helpful is if we probably in January, once, during the regular or during, probably during the work session, really, we take a look at the fall data. And then, then, and that might inform the board about what we, what we might want to see for the spring. To Mrs. Kitson, Kitson's point, this is, obviously, you guys have seen news stories and things. And certainly, everyone's been affected by this, but we can see where, where, where the, where the children are with the fall data. And I know we had kind of a presentation on that, but I, I can work with teaching and learning and kind of see where things are. And then, you know, maybe the board can develop, maybe the board could develop a goal based on that. Does that make sense, Ms. King?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm also, oh, I'm sorry.
So just thinking back to the presentation that we had and remembering some of the questions that we were asking about how the testing measures and programs have changed. And like we said, this is our first year. Are we considering grades as a measurable piece of data for student achievement?
Well, you could. Great, grades, though, I think, you know, we're, we're, it, it, at this point, I don't, I, I would focus more on MAP.
We're doing MAP or are we doing, they keep changing?
NWEA is the name.
So that was the issue is we had a different tracking system and then we switched to something. So we've had measures in place. It's just.
And so we can't really see if our students are getting better or worse. So we need, my point is that we need, as a district, we need to be, we need to create our own system of something that we can use to watch where our kids are going, whether it be up or down, whether the system changes or, you know, whether they do a new test or not. We need to be able to see if our students are excelling at a higher rate. Like, we just need to be able to see it somehow.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think MAPS probably the best, the best, the best piece of data you're going to have. It's, 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 you know, it, it's, it's tried and true. It's scientifically based. And I think it, it, it's really, it, it's not a flavor of the month thing. And I think it was, it was a great switch when we did it. Because it also gives us access to normative data on a national level. I'm actually attending webinar this week to look at trends based off of COVID, which I'll be reporting out to the board on Friday. I think that's this week, to make sure.
And NWEA is the same thing. NWEA is the big organization. MAPS is the name of the, the actual tool. So we're in our second year with the MAPS assessment. And it allows you to measure the student from where they start. So it might be a 10th grader, but they may, when they take their assessment, they may be at an eighth grade level. And we want to see one year's worth of growth. So at the end, we want to see that although that student is in the 10th grade, that they are now measuring in the ninth grade.
And this is something that's in our strategic plan, is it, is it not, Mr. Hanky? I mean, we're talking. So I think, I'm thinking that this, the student achievement board goal will be in conjunction with our strategic plan goals, which we'll be talking about shortly. But I think we need to, as a board, really comment, we, we need to develop these. I mean, we have a starting point. But I think in, in January, we need to have these documented somewhere, whether it's on the website. We have to probably have a board resolution or a board agenda item adapting these, these goals. And also what our board norms are. So that's just my thoughts. I'm not sure if, when anyone else thinks about that.
Yeah, and I just wanted to comment back with, just we're talking about COVID and the barriers and achievement may not be a year. Our goals still should be the goals. And if we don't meet them due to COVID or whatever, we know why we didn't meet them. But that can all go away. We don't want to change what our, where we're looking at for our district. Regardless of the barriers, we know they exist, but our goal remains our goal for the district. We want our students to have this amount of growth. And when we may not achieve it this year, because we know that there are barriers that exist and we do not know what additional barriers that may exist due to COVID or anything else that may come up. But that doesn't change the direction that we would like to see the district go in. So whether we meet it or not, when we come back and discuss where we're at and measure while we, it will be able to know of the barriers were, the ones that we were able to control, the ones we were able not to, the ones we may need to make some changes and, and things of that sort. So although I believe COVID is very relevant to things, it cannot change our vision for our district as a whole.
It can be an excuse. Our students need to learn.
Yeah.
It's a barrier potentially, but, but we have to adapt as a district.
We have to continue to evolve as a district and, and break down those barriers and provide the assistance that both our students and our administration and staff need in order to get the students engaged, get them to attend and to be successful.
Which goes to the equity goal also, because we know that there are, that there is some issues with equity in more of the inner ring districts and that. So I could actually see now, as we're talking about this in January, the board retreat, I'm sorry, our monthly board work session, we could actually spend the time finalizing these, these goals. If, if that would be something we could add to that agenda.
Do we just want to keep it at two goals?
We don't have to, but I think if, if there is some, you know, if there is another goal that we want to measure, that we can. Though I'm thinking actually, this is something new for the board and we're already halfway through the year. So if we're doing it something within the school year, you know, it might be nice just to start with two, really get that process down. And then come Janu-, I'm sorry, July, you know, then we could sit as a board and discuss what are our board goals for the 2021, 2022 school year.
And I don't want to sound like we're being like, but I think these are good goals. And I'm not going to say easy goals, but they're so aligned with the strategic plan. And I feel like we're moving forward anew with the strategic plan and these goals that are very well aligned. So it's not like we are doing various different things. I think they will coincide and complement one another like they should anyway. And it, it'll bring a, a greater strength to our district with us having these goals. And just even for us to be successful in monitoring and measuring these goals for our students in the district.
And I also think with you, I'm sorry, with two overarching goals, there could still be multiple tasks under the goals. So that we are hitting a couple of different areas, but still they fall underneath those two overarching goals.
Yeah. And I think the strategic plan to hit those smaller things, you know. It, you know, we're just sitting, we're just, we're sitting on the, the, the foundation of it. And, and the strategic plan will work these for us.
Right. And actually, as you, to one thing you said, Ms. Daniels, these goals are really something we could have every year. I mean, I know we're, we're starting these goals, but there's always going to be a concern for equity. There's always, our focus should be student achievement, whether it's academic or sports or whatever, arts and music, that type of achievement. So if no objection, we can, as a board, look through these, try to come up with some more specific information, get together at our work session in January to finalize the goals and put some measurements in place to make them SMART goals, looking at the barriers, et cetera. And then.
Oh, sorry, Mrs. Kit.
No problem.
Yeah, let, let me also work with teaching and learning to bring some clarity around NWEA MAP. Again, I've got a 500-foot view of it too. I get reports. I look at them. That's why I'm doing the webinar. And there, there is some training that might be available for board members. So, so they, they can look at, look at, look at how MAP works. Because it's a little different, you know, it's not year to year. It measures in what's called a RIT score. It does give you a point in time to a point in time. So we want to make sure the board has clarity. So when they make their goals, they, they, you know, we, we can be very clear on it. Just sorry, my two cents again.
Thank you. No, no, that, that was very helpful. Thank you.
No, and I mean, you guys, your input is very important because we want goals that the district can achieve. And we're just sitting at the board level. So we want to see student achievement and we want to see equity in the district. But we don't know the day-to-day, you know, our goals are, board goals are kind of sit pretty broad. So you guys can fit in, you know, the pieces, you know, to build the district up. So you guys, whatever, you know, I look forward to your recommendations on supporting us and solidifying these goals for the district.
Certainly. I appreciate that, Mrs. Daniels.
And we also have board norms that we discussed and, and they were put in, in bullet points. And, and this was given to the board members. I think too, if we can review these and make notes, and then we can go through each of these norms at our work session in January to see if this is something that we want to adopt. It would, you know, we could do all this. That would be the focus of the January work session. Or we could go through them tonight. It doesn't matter. But I'm thinking, you know, hopefully we'll all be together in January. It'll be a new, you know.
I guess the only question that I do have about is number two, where with the, the board will receive agenda packets in a timely manner in order to prepare for meetings. I just wanted feedback from Mr. Hanky as far as what what, what that timeframe and what works best for administration. And then we could discuss what works for us.
Can we also talk about the transition into board docs and what that will look like for meeting preparation, if that is going to take a toll on you guys getting documents to us, if it'll be faster or slower?
Uh, well, with, with board docs, it will be faster because the documents can be, are integrated right into the system. And, you know, once the agenda, the, the, the tentative agenda is finalized, then all of those documents and things can be viewed by the Board of Education instead of, you know, I, and, and I understand you get this huge email with all these PDFs. And, and, and this is, this is, the board docs is going to organize it a lot better. And Mr. Patton, you want to speak on it a little bit more because he's been organizing the training on board docs?
Yeah, absolutely. It's just, it'll make things easier. So when we are organizing our board docs to send to you for the tentative or for the board meetings once a month, everything will be listed in there, including our notes from each of the departments. So in the administrative content area, we're able to type right in there and to notify you. So you're able to see everything. The only difference is, is when we send a tentative agenda to you, you will only have a short window to look at it. So usually be the weekend. So it'll be sent to you. Usually we send them on Thursdays. Monday mornings, we will have to close that before a board meeting. So that if we have to make any adjustments or edits to that, then we will send it to you by the end of the week. And you will have it before the weekend, before the first board meeting, so that you can see all the documents. Everything will be uploaded. You're able to load everything under each department. So it'll make things much more and easily a seamless process through for both the administrators as well as for each of the board members.
Mr. Patton, I just want to clarify. So on Thursday, Ms. Miller sends out, so Thursday prior, two Thursdays prior to our meeting, the tentative agenda comes out with attachments. And the goal is to have, really it to be a final, you know, pretty much everything we're going to be looking at. But it'll be a tentative agenda. And we've been meeting the Monday after that tentative agenda comes out. But you're saying on Monday morning, we won't have. But you're saying on Monday morning, we won't have access to that, or is there a way we can keep it until after our work session and then?
So it was, so like, so for example, this past weekend, we sent the, Mrs. Miller sent you the email with the, uh, the board docs. The board docs was open all weekend long, so this morning we we close it, because if we have to make any edits or adjustments. It will be closed during the week for the administrators to make any changes that we have to add or add anything to you. And then on Thursday this week, we will send that back to you.
Now, is there a way we could wait till after our work session? Because what if, I'm just thinking if we have questions or they at tonight. Just a thought, I'm just.
Oh, yes, we can.
We can keep that open, we were just, um, yeah, we can get that, we will, after our work session, it will be close to you. Until, uh, we finalize everything and then send it back to you.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Christine, cuz.
That's how I work, but I think it would just be helpful, so that way we know we we have to be prepared for our work session and then that way. We just, you know, whether we print it or whatever, so this way Tuesday, it'll be closed, but you'll have, we have, we'll have given you feedback. Okay, perfect, all right, thank you.
And then those, um, and then I know we discussed just, um. Setting some parameters if possible for what went on the final agenda. After the work session, um, just. We didn't talk about, didn't really, I didn't see it, um, outlined in our board norms, but just, um. Eliminate some of, um, the situations where the board seems to be put on a carpet. And the superintendent sometimes be put on a carpet. We, you know, not have some of those heavy items on that final agenda unless it's an absolute emergency. So that we'll have time to discuss it in work session or prior, you know, it answers, um. Prior to coming to the meeting, so what was, what what would you suggest those parameters be or what do you think? Those parameters, you know, should be, what type of things?
Yeah, ma- may I interject, Mrs. Daniels? Uh, um, I've put some, uh, controls in place, uh, and here are my thoughts. When we, I think, uh, when there are personnel issues that have to be dealt with. Uh, I think tho- those those would go on. Um, when we're trying to hire, uh, teachers and it's it's very time sensitive. Um, uh, or other employees, actually, all employees, um, if we have to do that, we'll have a very, very, uh. Good explanation, it's basically personnel based. Any issues that have to do, um, uh, that that with fiduciary issues and things of that nature need need to be done before the tentative. I think we we look at things that have to be done. And if if that makes sense, it's usually couched in personnel. Mr. Sluga, is there anything on fi- on the finance side that could could, uh, plop over on that?
Uh, not really, you know, I I think that we need to, um. If if there is something of that big of importance, it should be on the tentative agenda, and I don't think there's anything that. Even if maybe there's something coming down the road that I anticipate that didn't take place by the tentative. I think there is still the idea of at least getting something on the tentative to talk about. That this may be coming this week to be finalized for the agenda, but at least get it on the agenda as a, uh. We say placeholder to discuss. To know that, I mean, maybe final language for, just to even say that borrowing we did, it could be final language coming in a resolution from our attorney. But it should be as a placeholder on a tentative, so you know that when you see it in the final agenda, you're not surprised.
And then we can discuss those placeholders, so that's a little bit of a change for us operationally, but what we'll do is if we have something like, say, okay. We need a resolution, I I'm, this is a total hypothetical for anybody watching, but say we're purchasing property, right? But we don't have the final, you know, uh, thing, uh, together, but we say, okay. Let's let's put this on the tentative as a placeholder, so we have a, you know, a broad discussion at the, uh, uh, you know, at at the work session. Does that make sense, Mr. Sluga?
And those type of things, you know, those type of things are, you know, we know we've got something big in the making, so. Know that those things can kinda pop up, but I can't honestly say, in what you're saying that you have kinda made some changes. I have noticed that I, the last couple of months, I wasn't hit with this huge, totally different agenda. By the final and that has been, um, appreciated, um, so much, I've I've been able to feel way more prepared. For the board meetings and, um, having enough time to kinda chew on and digest what's on agenda, so. I've noticed it and it's been very helpful.
But thank you, Mrs. Daniels, what I what I tasked my team with is to get, basically, here here here's my, kinda my. Directive, it was, everything's gotta be on the tentative agenda. And then, and then we, and then we go from there, if that makes sense, so if there is something that, you know. Goes by the wayside, it's gotta wait a month, it's gotta wait a month. You know, and unless it's 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 some sort of thing that has to be approved, and like I said, there there will be things, especially in hiring season. Uh, when when you get into August and things of that nature, uh, where we're trying to get teachers approved. Um, if we're down cleaners, things of that nature, you might see them on there, uh, uh, you know, things like that, but we'll try to give. Uh, you know, like I said, my, that was my directive, is to get everything on there that we possibly can, and some things, if they gotta wait, they gotta wait.
And I think just in our board norms, just in case, because, you know, just in case these, we're not here to clarify, we just. Personnel most definitely is one of those things that, you know, a special meeting could be called for personnel, you know, personnel matters have to be handled. So just make personnel, you know, most definitely an exception in emergencies that's deemed appropriate by. You know, the board president, when it's clear, I think to be fair enough. And you guys have already put some things in place where I know I've noticed the difference, so, you know, but just to document in our norms. I think we should just make sure that we exclude personnel matters and, um. Emergency matters that's approved by the board president.
And I think as Mr. Hanky said, time sensitive, or if something does show up, um, a rationale, I mean. Yeah, because like you said, things come up, so if something does come up and it does need to be voted on, um. Then as long as we're aware, it's just so it's. Clear, because sometimes the agenda is, there is a lot of them sometimes, and then, so if there is a change. There is a rationale for it, an explanation, whatever, and then that way we're aware and then. If we get it, we'll get that final agenda Thursday before the meeting, so we can, you know, it will give us time. Um, and we can always ask questions that final weekend or, you know, prior to the meeting or during the meeting, but this way. The the norm will be for the district and then we can, um, kind of add a bullet point or whatever to that. Board norm, but we can clarify that a little bit.
Yeah, just so they don't get caught up later with somebody's. Yeah, I just gotta say this, uh, one thing is communication is key, because, you know. You guys seen we were, we were having a challenge with something and keeping up and you guys like went right into motion. You know, to make sure that that barrier, you know, as soon as you guys heard that we were having a challenge with that. You guys went right into motion to, um, eliminate that barrier the best you can, and that this was all derived out of this. Common communication.
It's so important, you just need the, we all need to know the expectations of each other, so these norms, I think will go far. And and it'll be a living document and we can edit and update it and revise it if needed, but come January in our work session, we can. Kind of finalize this, I'm excited, okay. All right, any other questions about board norms or goals? All right, so Mr. Hanky, um, we're ready to talk about the strategic plan.
Certainly, did everyone get the PDF? Uh, okay, great, let me share my screen here, uh, if I can find it. Okay, can everyone just see the, the slideshow? I gotta have you show yet, can everybody see? Give me a thumbs up if you could, yeah, okay. Okay, um, I wanted to go through here and update the board on the strategic plan. Um, and what I did was I want, and and this is also quite frankly for the community, because they were involved in the, um. In the, uh, uh, focus groups. Uh, so, uh, we wanna go through that and wanna go through, we re- revisit our timeline and, uh, make sure we're on track and and see where things are. So we'll discuss, first of all, the portrait of a graduate, uh, we did have, um, I did have Mr. Crooks, uh. Uh, take a look and, uh, work through some, uh, he worked on this with me, uh, to update the, um. Update the graphic that goes along with the portrait of a graduate. And I I think I said this and I'm a couple of times and I I was just looking for some board feedback, what what do you think about the new, um. The new graphic and and what it represents?
Um, I actually took a a real deep dive into this, um, so I actually, I have gotten. I've got some stuff written down here, I'm just gonna s- take a picture of it and send it to you guys, um, I think that. It's a a living document in that it's consistently getting better, but I think that as we want this to be. That here is what our graduate should look like, that it needs to be perfect, um, so there are some. Some tense things, um, that I think we should should take a look at, um, there are some equity pieces as far as like the his and her. Um, that I think we should take a look at just to to be more inclusive, um. And then just as it says, a Garfield Heights graduate will embody these characteristics, I just feel like whatever is. Around that, we need to be able to say, a Garfield Heights graduate will embody this characteristic, uh. Like, it just ne- it it needs to all flow, so if we're gonna have that little piece there, I just wanna make sure that. We can throw in any of those four things in that it it makes complete sense, so. I'll take a screenshot of this and I'll email it to you guys, so you guys can all see, um, what I thought about it. It's getting better, it's getting better, but I really want this to be like.
Oh, Ms. Thomas, no, we, again, this is why we're here, to talk about this and to make sure that. Um, you know, we have a document that, uh, the board is comfortable with and 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 also that represents what we want our graduates to be. So, uh, any other feedback, uh, from anyone on this?
I, um, kinda, I agree with Ashley a little bit, it's getting better, but I have, it it, it hasn't totally like. Wild me yet in some things that we've put out in the district, you know, and this is like. One, you know, this is the highlight of our, like, this is, this is us. This is Garfield High City School District, so although it's getting better, I'm not like. Completely wild yet, yeah, a lot of it is, um, yeah. Not totally like. Is, I but I am, but as far as the substance, um. I'm excited about, um, us moving forward and, um. Yeah, I'm I'm excited about the substance and 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 the, but it but it is is. And and what I'm looking forward to see in the students in our district, um, the substance, I'm good with. But, um, I just feel like some of the wording and stuff, but what it means for our district, absolutely. Um, it's a goal, it's something for us to be proud of and to work towards, absolutely.
All right, that, that, thank you, I, we appreciate the feedback. And anything, uh, specific you have, Mrs. Daniels, you know, be, please send it along to me, um. That would be helpful, uh, as as we, as we move forward and and make this as, Miss Thomas said, as perfect as we can. So we have a, you know, cuz this is a front and center document, it will be, and it's.
I don't have anything per se, um, you know, to, I I'm just waiting for it to pop up and just wow me. You know, so y'all do what you you do. And you know, I'm gonna tell you the truth, so.
Okay, we'll work, we'll work on it, Ms. Ms. Thomas, I'm sure she's got good feedback for me, so we she'll help us and we'll we'll move forward with it, so. Anything else from anybody else? Um, one thing I will say is, I I I did like some of the changes and I'm glad it got us a little closer, I I think it it it. And I like at least the graphics too, I think they they really align with kinda how, uh, kind of a brand for the district, which is good, that's important to have a brand. You know, so, um, those are things, so with that, I'll 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 move forward then, um. So I wanted to, uh, uh, go over, this is, th- these data are what the focus groups. Um, came up with, this means this is purely data from staff minus board members of the administration, okay? Parents and community members, we are working to get the student data, um, we have learned that students do not. Uh, necessarily interact with email, so we 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 have, we we have got. We are, I I just talked to Suzanne to- today and we are going to be organizing these student sessions. Um, uh, so, uh, we'll we will get feedback from them. Um, so, again, you know, if you if you see see some things here, uh, it's, I think it's really good data to have, um. You know, there's data about C V C C, uh, and college, uh, credit plus opportunities. Um, teaching students, uh, uh, you know, about, uh, strong work and study habits. Uh, develop, development of individualized learning plans. Um, problem-based learning. Improvement of written and verbal communication skills of students, I I, you know, that that's, uh, something that's. I think, uh, a a national, uh, uh, kinda drive in terms of, uh, of employment. Um, baseline and progress measures, you're so student and program success, so. Uh, a- again, uh, good data to hear from, um, from our, uh. Uh, fr- from our groups, I'm just gonna move along here. Resources and facilities, uh, it was interesting, I think, and Mr. Sluga can kinda chime in too. What the community and and staff and, uh, um. Uh, a thought about resources and facilities, and I think we have to kind of do a little bit of education, cuz what we were looking at here is kind of. Physical buildings, Mr. Sluga?
Yeah, we were looking at our 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 facilities and we're also looking at, um. When we talk about resources, I think the group and maybe it's a a little bit of, uh. A play on words, but when we were looking at resources, I always looked at it as getting adequate resources to fund the initiatives that we wanna do. And the group was looking at it, what resources can we provide them in the community? So that that's kind of like a a little bit of a disconnect and, uh, and we talked about that with Susannah and how to, um. Bring those two together, yeah, with the with the facilities too, and that's a challenge that the, um. That our group will be, uh, dealing with as we move forward with this plan.
Now, now with that, though, this is not, these data are important to look at, uh, even even if we can put them in another bucket. Um, but certainly resources in terms of, uh, up-to-date technology, uh, uh, it fits into the bucket. Uh, virtual learning best practices, uh, implementing continuously improved, certainly important right now. Um, student collaboration, uh, recognition to support a supportive learning environment, uh, kind of a P B I S. Kind of, uh, tint there, um, facilities, uh, as places of support and resources for the community. Uh, supplemental resources for parents in need, uh, easily accessible and available in each building. Uh, an innovation lab, um, we we, I I think they were looking at kind of like, kind of a maker space type of 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 situation. A mini health clinic for student healthcare needs, which is, uh, something that, um. That could certainly go under resources and facilities and something that, uh, I I've I've looked at in the past year. Uh, an improvement of sports facilities, that absolutely falls falls in that bucket, um, you know, certainly our. Our, uh, our, uh, our, our athletic facility with our our stadium and, uh, track. Um, is is a little aged, to the point where we're, that we can't run track on there, so.
So, Mr., um, Sluka, when we talk about resources, are we just, when we're defining resources? Are we talking about just kinda like, um, more, um, that some of the legislative things? That, um, with, um, us losing money to the, um, the. Um, the voucher programs, are we talking about the necessity of opportunities to get community engaged for levies? Creating community and corporate partners, are those the type of resources that you're looking for us to?
You absolutely hit it on the head with all of those, Mrs. Daniels. That that's exactly what we're gonna be looking at, all all aspects of the st- the state funding piece. Um, business community partnerships and if possible, um, going on with with the levy. The a- all of those come into play and that's what we've been looking at. So, yeah, you hit those right on the, right on the nose there.
I wish, I wish the, um, consultant would have kinda geared, I think if the. I wish, I wish the um, consultant would've kinda geared, I think if the participants would've understood um, the question, then they probably, you know, would've been able to answer it better, because I would've have loved to hear the community feedback and ideals about those pieces, cause those are very sensitive pieces with, in the community and the school district where we're trying to get money. And so it would've been really nice to hear what their thoughts was and their ideals, cause that's what we really need a lot of support from the community if nothing else. So you know, legislatively, making sure we elect the appropriate people in appropriate places to help change school funding. Um, levy being passed, you know, um, that's where we really need the community engagement, I think. All the pieces we do, but I really, you know, you know, I really wish we could, they had a clear understanding, so we could've got that's an important place with some good feedback.
But, but I think this Daniel's in exactly what you're talking about. I think as we move forward with the engagement plan and we get uh, more community members on these committees to e- e- engage and get that information and be a part of this process. Those are the individuals that are gonna help us take that message back out to the community and tha- and that's gonna be our charge of moving forward with this community engagement plan. And each committee will have that and that, and that's, you make a great point and that's, that's, and that's what I think that we are um, gonna focus on along with the facilities is, is just that with our group.
And uh, the good news is, is that we are um, uh, uh, looking at, and I, I will uh, talk about this after the focus group slides, a, a survey that's gonna be done bu- bu- of the steering committee members, which is more than a hundred folks, uh, including all the board members. So uh, that should capture that and I'll talk to Suzanne about that a bit.
And it could even be renaming and, and specifically saying um, resources that support or advocate for facility or funding for facilities. So just rewording the um, this bucket.
They have financial resources. Sometimes we's afraid to say money. Get turned out. I mean, I turn, turn off just like, oh, you know, but yeah, that's, we need money. To do all that.
All right. Well, to move forward here, um, well, this gonna work? Uh-oh. Hold on a second, folks, I'm sorry. There we go. Um, now, this kind of, the, the reason I wanted to point this out is that it, it, and this is what kinda seemed where, where the discussion was going uh, with the consultants is that it was kind of a holistic student success and that's, it, it's an interesting way to look at it. Um, uh, you know, where we have instruction, uh, reinforcement of grade level skills, awareness and support of differing mental health needs, um, promote, promotion of involvement in extracurricular activities, uh, partnerships and services in the school to support students with economic and socio-emotional needs. Um, the, the community, um, uh, you know, talked about financial literacy and basic life skills. Um, again, that was.
Do we have a class for that? I feel like I took a class or two.
Well, here, here, Ms. Thomas, here, here's, here's one of our, our challenges actually. Home economics, as it used to be called, and then, you know, called um, uh, um, di- different, different things where you, you learn those types of life skills, we can't find a teacher. Uh, there's no programs left. I mean, literally, there's, there, there aren't any programs left. We, we lost our last teacher and uh, we have talked about going back out for that.
Or can, is that something that we can partner with an organization that does?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Now, financial literacy is absolutely in the curriculum. Yep, that's already there. Um, you know, we're supplemental life skills and money management training and um, goal setting. Um, which I, which I, which I, which I, I, I really liked all these, uh, uh, just reading them. You know, I, I know that you, you may have had a chance to read them. Um, but you know, the, these are things that um, uh, you know, are, are, are really good feedback to incorporate, so. Um, move on here, if I can. Whoops. Make sure I have the right thing here. Okay, so uh, here's the community feedback we got about diversity, equity and inclusion. Recruitment and retention of diverse sta- staff that reflect our student body. Uh, staff training to create safe environment for all students to express themselves. Uh, staff sensitivity to differing households, situations and resources. Uh, students having the skills to be self-advocates and openly discuss difficult issues. Uh, students and staff having cultural awareness to see value inherent in all people. Uh, teachers having the cultural sensitivity to uh, personalize relationships with all students. Um, I, I quite frankly can, can uh, prefer car- cultural competency, but that's just about what, uh, in terms of uh, of it's important, I think, to use the right words sometimes.
Yes.
Um, intergenerational multicultural connections uh, fostered through volunteering. I think that was interesting to hear. Um, community interaction through multicultural discussions and events and students with different, differing needs are included and valued as part of our learning community. I, again, was, was uh, I, I was uh, pretty thrilled to hear all those um, uh, that came from our, 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 uh, you know, parents and community and um, our staff. Um, and I think that that really uh, dovetails on some of the efforts we have going and we're going to have uh, moving forward, so. Any feedback there on the, on that particular thing or comment? Thumbs up from Ms. Thomas, okay.
I also think that a, another um, term that we could look at is cultural humility. Uh, because that in, the encompass, encompasses both the sensitivity piece and the competence piece. Um, so cultural humility.
Okay, yeah. Uh, very good. Oh, what did I do? Uh, family and community engagement. Um, again, this is uh, our, uh, from these focus groups, attendance and graduation rates continue to rise. Uh, families are welcomed and engaged as partners in their student learning, they like to see. Uh, families and community members include, included as active volunteers and adult learners. Uh, students visibly contributing to the community. Uh, mentorship program provides community members to directly develop students' career exposure. Uh, field trips and career exploration promote a sense of learning in the community. Um, eh, eh, this was an overall theme that, that they, the, 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 these groups believed that they knew what was going on in the district. Uh, which was nice to hear that uh, across uh, focus groups. Um, and then building of business partnerships. Uh, again, that could shift to another bucket, so. Um, tho- tho- those are uh, ag- again, uh, good feedback from our, our groups. I wanted to go over uh, what we had uh, for our um, timeline and where we are. Um, we went through the steering committee meeting, uh, we went through the focus groups. Um, we did meet as, as, as a leadership team and I wanted to, this piece also obviously like today, bring this back to the Board of Education. Um, and this piece here, uh, we wanna reconvene the steering committee. Uh, now, we're a little off track here. We're, we're looking probably at January here. But uh, the hope is, is that we can still get, get this substantially done or done by the end of January, okay? Uh, that, that, I think we can still meet the goal. I can't remember if this was, if the survey was on here. Um, the next piece and, and to Mrs. Daniels' point about uh, resources and, and facilities, we're gonna do a, a pulse survey of the uh, steering committee uh, folks. Um, and um, and, and then go from there. So early January, we're gonna, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have to zoom. Uh, and we'll get, we'll get the uh, uh, steering committee uh, together. Uh, and then uh, finalize the plan content. Um, now, um, any um, uh, um, at any point, would, would, um, you know, maybe after the steering committee or something, would the board like to meet a little earlier in January, maybe after the organizational meeting or, or, you know, the, after the organizational meeting date? Uh, to talk about this, um, we might, we might wanna have a couple of sessions. Eh, eh, I, I, I mean, we don't have to decide that tonight. Uh, we can certainly leave that to the Board of Education to refine and, and act, and get the plan ready for prime time. Does that make some sense?
So with this feedback on um, the focus groups, so are you guys gonna just, are we gonna select the ones, are we including everything in the strategic plan or are we gonna, is there gonna be a selection of which ones fit or possible addition to some of this? Um?
Um, we're not going to select them all and I'm sorry, Mrs. Daniels, if I cut you off, I apologize.
No, you didn't.
Okay, okay. Um, we, we are not gonna select them all. We need this to be a focused strategic plan, but we could also add, add and subtract, okay? This is feedback for us. Um, uh, and we also need to take it in, in, in terms of uh, 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 my team being educators and things like that and, and put some, put our spin on it. And also take into account as, to, to the board's point, the board goals and, and, and how those are gonna interact with this. Uh, this is another piece of data for us. I think the steering committee meeting is going to be very important to uh, uh, focus the plan down. Uh, and uh, then we can meet, um, like I said, eh, it might, might, it might be two sessions to get to where we are with the final plan. Does that make some sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I do have a question just for my board members as a whole, as it relates to our board goals and now we've gone over the strategic plan. I know we said only two goals, or just even Mr. Hankey and Al can maybe um, chime in on this discussion. Should the board have goals aligned with the fiscal piece? Cause that's one of our big responsibilities, you know, as a board. Um, should, are we missing the mark not having a goal aligned with um, the fiscal responsibility of the district?
Um, eh, I can chime in on that. I think the uh, in a, in a nutshell, the only thing I could see where the board's goal would be, and it's hard right now, is a lot of boards will set parameters as far as having a minimum balance or a uh, board goal where we're going to, let's just say, balance the budget er, each year and we're going to do whatever means it takes to balance the budget versus weighing a fiscal piece of do we do what we can to keep the educational programming? Um, and if some years are, we need to spend a little bit more money and not meet that uh, whatever we set as a board goal or even a policy? Or do we just set policy and just let the chips fall where they may? Uh, right now, I, I think the board is with the two pieces um, that you have. I think the fiscal policy probably needs to be looked at down the road after the strategic plan is in place and we set parameters of what resources we're looking at and what we want to fund for our district and then set the goals to fund those programming and areas that is determined in the uh, strategic plan. And then that's the goal is how can we fund fiscally the strategic plan items that we identified? Does that make sense?
Kind of, but.
Yes, yeah, I know it's like, it was a convoluted, long, long thing.
That's my cloud, you know?
No, no, but I'm saying.
Clear area.
Well, definitely, um, I guess one of the goals can't do as a board member, do you um, okay, eh, do we want to become for more financial, my financially literate as a board member and our goal is to ensure that we get uh, we take these classes or we get the latest update or we get the most information on a timely basis to understand the school finances?
Well, no, I mean, I guess as a board goal, I'm just trying to look at the foundation, the holdup, our strategic plan. And so money is what makes.
Oh, it does.
So.
See that, right.
Yeah, so that's just my only reason for asking. That could be something we consider later down the line, but that was just kinda thought that came to my mind as I heard the presentation, like we've kinda, we're connected with every other piece of the strategic plan and our goals except for the finance and resource.
Well, there could be.
What could be a, uh, not a vague, but what could be a, you know, a goal, the board can have that that resource and facility piece can sit on and be stabilized. I just wanna make sure that we're structured properly organizationally.
Yeah.
And so I wanna make sure that although having board goals is new to the board is something that um, it may be new to the board, but I want it to be right. And so if it means a little, one more extra bow or whatever, but I'm not looking for it to be, you know, real heavy. I'm just trying to find, to make sure that you guys got, we got what you need, that you can sit what you're trying to do on securely. That's, that's just my mindset.
Uh, uh, well, you could do it i- i- in a, in a few ways. You could say, okay, um, the facilities, and, and I throw this out there and it might happen down the road, it might not, but the facilities committee comes out and says, we need a new middle school. And one of the board's goal is that we are going to fund a new middle school. How can we do that? Or we, we wanna put more AP programs in place, cause that's what we um, for the betterment of our students. One of our goals is getting the funding for enhancing the AP program. That could be a, a board goal. And prioritizing that way.
Or what I'm thinking is maybe like something like fiscal transparency per se. Because what we discussed possibly in our goal could be making sure the district established that community finance group. I think you had shared with us one and kinda dropped the ball and that to support that and then having more fiscal transparency as a board goal or, you know, assuring fiscal transparency as a board goal will help support that forces and facility piece and maybe our goal, our measurable goal can be finally to start developing that committee. I think you chaired a committee with us, right?
Well, and, and that's exactly right. And I, one of my goals and, and I think that is, is one of the board's goals is, you're right, we wanna be more fiscally transparent and sharing information on the finance of the schools with this, with the community. One of those goals is we are going to start up a community financial committee. That uh, 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 board members will be on, a community members will be on, and that way we can share wh- what the school's district's finances are and that committee will be taking it out to the community.
So that's just a thought for us as a board, because you know, our duty is, you know, the, the fiscal piece, student achievement, you know, and so with us having, and then the, I think, I'm just trying to think how we can support what you guys are doing and really set the district up organizationally solid. And the board doing this part.
And, and I, and from my standpoint and just being around a while, I think that all this comes at a progression. We start with one, two, and then the logical courses and the next one comes in, the next board goal, which is a logical projection. And then you have the next goal. After you get the first two done, you go, oh, wait a minute, okay. Now what's the next goal we can achieve? And, and that all comes with i- in time. And it could come fairly quickly and it's uh, but yeah, I, I, I think that you identified your first two and then the, the next piece of it is absolutely, it's gonna be financial. Because uh, coming out of this strategic plan, I see is that there's gonna be some pieces in there that the school district to achieve what we wanna do is we're gonna need some level of funding to do that.
Yeah.
And the only, and the only way.
Go ahead.
Right, no, and the only way we could do that is we need the help from our state legislators. How is that gonna look? How do we get them to help us? The community is gonna have to help us fund that. Cause they have a stake in it. And then the business community, how are we gonna have them? And all that comes from fiscal transparency. Here's where we're at. This is what we need. We're not trying to do anything different. And, and we need your buy-in. We're, we're doing it the right way and we need your buy-in. Come help us.
And as we're looking at student achievement, it kind of incorporates the financial piece. What, what do we need? What pro- what facilities do we need to provide education? And going back to Representative House when she was here, what is the real cost of a stu- to, to teach us? I mean, the, the question that no one really is coming to answer for.
Absolutely.
Thinking about that too, as we look at the whole child.
Yep.
Good conversation. And we can look at that for our um, as a bo- as a goal and I'm, I'm going to look, I didn't have a chance at it, I didn't with um, some of the board goals and norms that um, Ms. Key's rights had given us to, to look at. Um, I'm just gonna kinda take a look at some of those other school boards and see what types of. What types of goals and norms that they have, and see if there's a way we can kind of. See something they've done and and craft it to our, to our needs, so. All right, any questions about Mr. Hanky's presentation? Thank you, that was very thorough, and we're looking forward to the next steps. But I think you're muted.
Saying, I I'm I'm saying approval and rollout then, right? So we, well, yeah, that that'll, that'll be it, so. Let me stop sharing, let me make that stop. There we go, stop share, okay. Okay, Mrs. Kitson.
All right, and last on our agenda is a review of the tentative agenda. And I don't know if anyone had any questions about any of the agenda items that were presented to us, given to us on Thursday.
No.
Okay.
Ge- generally, as Mr. Saluk will tell you, December's pretty light.
Not much going on, yeah, which is good, we have enough going on. Um, so, yeah, and I would look through, and nothing really stood out to me either, so.
Um.
No.
Ms. Mrs. Kitson, I don't mean to go o- off subject, but things are developing rapidly in terms of COVID, and I just want to. Speak to the board and the public, uh, we'll, we're gonna be taking a look at what we're gonna do with January fourth in the next few days. Um, quite frankly, it's looking right now like we're going to remain remote. Uh, through at lea- we're we're gonna ourselves to the end of the semester on the twenty-second of January. Um, and I'll be working closely with the COVID COVID task force, and Ms. Thomas is a board liaison. Uh, to uh look at that, we're gonna meet again on Thursday, um, the numbers continue to be what they are, which are not good, so. Uh, I just wanted to put that out there, and I will certainly uh 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 apprise the board on Monday as well, and I wanted to make sure that the parents knew kind of where that was heading.
Thank you, thank you for all the updates and sharing that information with, with us, with the staff, with the public, with the parents. It's, it's so important to have that communication, it's, it's appreciated. Any other questions about agenda items?
No.
Nope, okay, so I believe, I don't know if we have to call this close this meeting, Al, or do we just?
Yes. Yeah, you need to just vote for an adjournment. Motion a second to adjourn.
Objection, we can adjourn this meeting, then we will be meeting six, six PM next Monday for our.
Right.
December meeting. Do I have a motion to close our work session?
So moved.
Ms. Daniels, a second?
Second.
Ms. Thomas, any discussion and roll call?
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kitson?
Yes, and so that passes four zero, and we will see everyone next Monday.
Next Monday.
Until then, please stay safe, be healthy and socially distant, and we will see you next week.